Make a motion to open the meeting at seven oh two.
So motion.
Second it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We have no invoices today. So, um.
There we go.
Yep. Make a motion to approve the minutes from. Yeah, January seventh, uh, meeting.
So motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Um, okay, a decision and possible vote on two twenty-nine School Street. Informational discussion for a possible filing.
Just to open it up before the applicant speaks, the developer came in to request a definitive subdivision plan. As I took a look at the definitive subdivision that he was presenting, I did not feel as though that it met the requirements of a definitive subdivision filing, since there was no actual subdivision of land. This is part of a Form A plan that was approved by the board, um, in two thousand.
Two thousand four.
Two thousand and four, so the developer is looking to come back to see whether or not the planning board would, um, accept this plan as a definitive filing.
Look at the copy of the plan as it was filed. Two thousand thirteen, twelve five thirteen.
Two thousand thirteen, okay. Now, this is the sec- would be the second lot of the parcel.
Possible six A is the one that's in the back.
Right, so when you came into us on this day, um, I believe you were trying to do the same thing back here, and you met the requirement, so we gave you the one lot.
Originally, I filed it, um, originally, I filed and recorded a plan that showed a two-unit building on the corner. And then I went back and I adjusted the lot lines, and I did it as a single unit, which is the one that I built up. And then I never did anything with the back.
Yeah, there was talk about it, and you wanted to put another one in.
There was talk about it, I never told they had a bill of one lots other than.
And you didn't want to do it at the time, um, and it actually would have been a two-lot subdivision, because you had this lot too. I can't remember why, I don't know what requirements you didn't meet, so, but I think you were told then that this would be a tricky parcel. How does this come out? Yeah.
I also have a recorded easement on lot six.
What?
That gives me the fifty. So the easement that I have is recorded.
Yeah.
That's what you see on the layout on this, it follows that easement.
So this fifty-foot still is with six, but included is the. That is the easement, the one and the same?
No, the easement is on this lot here, the easement starts like this, that's a piece of plot, keep it in the middle. To keep the fifty-foot coming through that.
Oh, because of this over here.
Right.
But isn't that going to be a taking of the easement, is that right to pass or repass, or is it, is it an actual taking of the land? Then what are you going to do with the setback? That makes lot six unconforming, right?
Well, it's still that lot, right? I mean, it's, I have no idea, I would have to go back and read the easement.
Yeah. Because that would, it would take the fifty-foot, and then, then you'd be into the setback for lot six. I know it's a tricky piece, but, you know, we danced around with this years ago to try to figure out what was, what the best approach was on that. I forget, why didn't you want to do that before, I forget, why didn't you want to go back? Remember? Yeah, because this one, we're right here with the one twenty.
There's no way of gaining frontage.
No, I mean, we danced around this plan for quite a bit, and, and, and that's how lot six B came into play, that was the final decision with. And wasn't there somebody else back here that had another piece that you were trying to annex or something? Is there somebody else back there?
Guy next door, I don't know where he kept the area, but I mean, that would be, but that's not going to be any frontage.
No.
Clearly not any more area, I don't want any area.
Yeah, and then with the fifty-foot, okay, once you take this guy, now he's non-conforming with the setback of his own house, so that's, that's a problem.
I don't think that's true, though, his house is over twenty-five, even if it's set back over twenty-five feet, he's still in conformity.
The setback is, see the circle?
Yeah.
The circle's going to be out of the setback, so, so you have that looks like five feet, but, you know, you're going, so then you're going to take it. And then, you know, with the easement, then what?
I thought the, um, the viola was actually changed.
Changed on the circle, yeah.
So under the eight point two point one lot regularity, the circle can be within the setback, it just has to be within.
Who owns lot six?
I don't.
So that person would.
I sold it, and then, I sold it to somebody that rehabbed it, and then they sold it.
Right. So, lot six would have to be back in the mix, and that was a pre-existing.
Well, if the easement already existed as part of lot six being built, though, it wouldn't.
Lot six was.
Lot six is the original.
The original house, so.
Right, but when did you, you said you have an easement to make that fifty?
Right.
So it's part of the lot of six, so the easement exists already?
Yes, yes.
So.
Is lot six, no?
Yes.
They showed it on their.
Yes, okay. So, coming in here, so you'd have to see how big the easement is, where that would go in.
But the lot doesn't have frontage.
Right.
So the lot is a whole lot as it sits today.
Right.
There is no such thing as a, a one-lot subdivision. So that you can't, you wouldn't be able to just construct a fifty-foot right-of-way and then build a house, and then ask for waivers to build that right-of-way.
Yeah, that's.
I think that there's other forms of, of mechanisms of doing that, like lands, courts, backyard, like back developments, but to actually do a definitive subdivision filing, does it fit this particular situation, since there's no subdivision of, of land, and he just doesn't have adequate frontage?
Yeah, and this is the second bite of the apple on this one, because this was, this was flagged, that's why there was a dance trying to find the best possible, and I guess I was wrong, but I thought there was something back here you were trying to negotiate at the time, or. So, I don't know, but a concession stand on the rail trail.
A variance.
A variance.
In the zone of course.
Currently, but I don't think that that excludes the planning board in the future from examining opportunities for something smaller for frontage waivers, and like land courts that Georgetown does, or back developments that, that require less frontage, but they have a lot larger area. West Newbury does something similar, if they have like double the square footage of the zone, but they have half the frontage, they can still do one single family dwelling on that lot. So there's creative ways to approach the remaining land that we have in town, that doesn't necessarily go along with a filing that doesn't suit what it is that you're filing for. So while I think that the, the land warrants development, I just personally, in my opinion, don't believe a definitive subdivision is the way to go above that, unless you were to go through the zoning board of appeals and ask for a frontage variance.
Yeah, and again, that's, I don't know, we beat this up and this took so long last time.
Right-of-way, holding the right-of-way, it's fifty-foot wide, a turnaround, that provides. You say in front of the one lot. Dividing, you happen to.
That would be under the, uh, one lot exemption, under the eighty-one L of Master No Law forty-one, which allows you to do that, but you must meet the, the requirements, and that lot does not meet the requirements, you can't just build a roadway to create frontage, and waive the frontage requirements, you, you could.
We're not waiving the frontage requirements, we're going to have.
But you're going to build a driveway.
We're going to build a roadway to some management, someone to, to Homestead, and someone to Webster, and several few others that are around now. It's very, Webster has the right-of-way, all Webster's is a right-of-way with a cul-de-sac at the end of it, it's not a roadway, I mean, but it was allowed to be a one-lot subdivision, because he proved the right-of-way that he had, he had a forty-foot right-of-way, it wasn't even his land, it was a right-of-way of some house's land. This is owned by the applicant, so this is even a better situation than that, in my opinion, it's.
Which one was that?
Webster.
Oh, Webster was different, because he had a right to pass and repass for like a hundred years.
So is he, he has a right to repass, he owns the land.
He created the lot in two thousand and thirteen, he created a four-chub lot, this is not a paper street, this is not an ancient way.
I agree, I agree.
This is not ancient blocks, this was created in two thousand and thirteen.
I, I agree with you, because we, we looked at this, and this was your, you know, we warned you about this, you know, and that's.
I was, I was under the understanding that if I came back, that I, that I could come back and do a one-lot subdivision, is what I was told, by you, as a matter of fact.
I thought we were going to, you were going to annex the land back there, and that's what we did, more conforming, but I didn't know anything about that, that thing over there.
Go the road out there. I mean, you get in, in the subdivision control law, it defines it's not a subdivision, okay, it's not a subdivision, but it's a subdivision of land, into a right-of-way, that you're going to build.
Bill, wasn't it off a center street? Didn't you guys, weren't you guys going to come down this way? And then, and the two lots were going here?
That was never even put out.
Because you had a bunch of sketches, I can't remember, it was a while ago.
I did ask if the applicant would like to, he could provide a legal opinion from his own counsel, that states that he does have the right to file a definitive subdivision, so that is another option, if the applicant would like to take that route as well. Or you could go through the zoning board of appeals for a frontage variance, and then if it was an opinion by counsel, we could share it with our town council to see whether or not that warrants a filing that the planning board could accept, under the subdivision control law, and if ruled a regulation, or he'd go before the zoning board of appeals to see whether or not they would grant him a hardship.
No, okay. It's a voting thing, or just an informal discussion?
It's an informal discussion unless the applicant would like a formal vote.
Well, what, what did you say, you'd like to?
No, I don't want to vote on it.
You don't want to vote?
No.
Okay.
If it was me, I'd go, I'd go to my leg- I'd go to my legal counsel.
Either legal, or. CVA.
I think I would.
Either two, you got two options.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Take you, I mean.
I will investigate.
I definitely would.
That's, that's what you're going to have to do, is in it, yeah, I mean. You go to legal counsel, we're going to send it out to our legal counsel, CVA says yes, then.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt to have a consultation with legal, and find, you know, zone an attorney, and find out what he thinks about that, and then go to the zoning board, if he has a good standing on it.
Right.
All right, awesome, okay, appreciate the time.
All right, okay. Okay, um, next on the agenda is Homestead Lane, recommendation for street acceptance, uh, possible discussion and vote.
Um, I just wanted to state that the board voted to, in your package you'll find minutes from the two thousand eighteen November thirteenth meeting, the board, the board voted at that time to release the remaining bonds for that particular project. The developer has submitted all of the pertinent information related to the formal street acceptance process, so they've provided the stormwater pollution, uh, the, the operations and maintenance plan for the stormwater infrastructure, they have provided a roadway as-built, they have provided deeds and documentation for the stormwater infrastructure as well as the roadway. The highway superintendent has been out to the site, he is going to write a letter recommending acceptance, he hasn't done it yet, but he said that he will get that to you by the end of the week, but I do have his verbal commitment that he is okay with the roadway. He does want to just double-check on the stormwater infrastructure to make sure that the outlets and whatnot are in good condition prior to taking it over. And then, the only other thing I wanted to just note, just to note, is that at the meeting back in May, those minutes are also in your packet, uh, there was a homeowner who was complaining about drainage issues, and so the board had made a motion that they wanted to see the site plan, um, for each individual lot, which was required, as a condition of the approved memorandum of decision, but that, yeah, was not provided, and at this point in time, that has still not been provided, however, all other documentation has been submitted by the applicant.
Did you guys find the site plan?
Have you gotten any more complaints about?
No, we haven't got any.
I wouldn't have thought so, it's been tried, but.
Nothing at all, so that's why I say just.
Uh, but the gentleman did come in, he did express his concern, the board did make a motion, and I just felt.
We did, we did, we did a site walk visit also.
That was when you guys walked around his basement, right?
We did a site walk visit, and found really no issue with it all, so.
That it wasn't.
Yeah.
From the.
But wasn't, did Bill do the plan? Yeah, the site plan for each lot, didn't he do them? So who did those? They were not done, okay. So wouldn't that go under a minor change to the?
The road has been constructed, the houses have been sold, everything's been done, um.
It's all, it's ready for approvals, so.
No, I get that, but to undo what we did.
Well, undo the motion, I think it's just a matter of addressing the motion, and that's why I wanted to make sure that it was on the record, that, that motion was.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, is that considered a minor change to the plan, because it was supposed to be each individual lot, and it didn't show up?
I don't necessarily believe it would be a change to the decision as it are, would already applied, um, but it may be that the board has reconsidered its position, uh, and then reporting that in the minutes.
Yeah, we're going to do something.
Definitely something in the minutes, I think would be sufficient.
I don't see any achieving that requirement.
So then that would be considered a minor change, vote, just a pass vote?
Yep.
Yeah, so we'd have, so we, so we get a motion to vote that as a minor change to the requirement of the subdivision.
Remove the requirement, right.
Based upon the inspection that all the board members did.
As well as the highway commissioner.
Yep.
Making this, writing this law.
Yes, yes, well, it's two separate things.
Right, it is, yeah, exactly, yeah.
So the first being to.
The first being to remove the condition for the, for the individual lots.
Yeah. And voted as a minor change, so.
But didn't we vote on that, part of being?
We're, we're taking it out.
Yeah, we're, we're now voting that.
We're now addressing it as considered it a minor change that we're going to remove it.
We no longer.
So you don't have to come in with a plan and the whole hearings and.
For the homeowner, they wanted the site plan, to protect the homeowner down the.
That's what we were just talking about, that's.
No, I know, I know.
Yeah.
Right, but during your walkthrough, did you see any way that the subdivision was in any way responsible for his water issues?
We didn't walk the subdivision, but we walked this.
Right, but you can see where the water's coming from on his lot, to know that it's not coming from the subdivision, so.
Who was responsible for bringing that plan in in the first place, did we ever figure that out?
It was, I believe it was a former selectman, Dark, was originally the one, and then that one was the one that had soon to expired, and then DeHulu Homes picked up the plan, and they had to get an extension through you, and then they were the ones who built it with Larry Kelly and, and themselves, and then, uh, there was a, a bunch of change of hands, I believe, in that.
So that was, that was unfortunately the engineer that passed away?
With millennials.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Phil, well, that explains that.
I mean, we've looked at this one for a while.
So then it would be the motion to remove the condition for a need to provide site plan for the individual lots, and then it would be a motion to, uh, and then the next motion would be to, for the recommendation to the board of selectmen for a street acceptance, since they, and then town meeting ultimately have the authority.
Pending the letter from highway.
Highway department.
Yes, pending that, yes, for sure, he definitely will get that to me in the end of the week, his father passed away, so he was unable to get it through today.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with that motion?
Yeah, aye.
I am.
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay, so motion.
All favor?
Aye.
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 So that was the motion for the condition for the need of the removal.
Move of the mining town.
The motion to.
The motion to.
Motion to accept and recommend for a street acceptance.
So motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, decisions, I mean discussions, sorry, and possible vote, thirty-eight Benjamin Street.
So the applicant had approached me about a situation that occurred on, um, the house that was created through the Form A process, uh, there had been some confusion with potential buyers as to the roadway, um, and how the roadway is essentially not constructed, it's, there's a temporary road to the drive, and then it will be improved as part of the definitive subdivision for the Benjamin extension portion of that. Because of that, uh, we were trying to figure out how we could best identify a way to accommodate the developer in this particular situation, since they, they had what was asked of them, so one of the things I, I had put forward to the developer and their attorney was maybe potentially an insubstantial change, that could reflect a clarification that the subdivision and construction of the subdivision are tied to the, um, thirty-eight Benjamin, not necessarily the home that's already been occupied. So I had put together a, uh, insubstantial change with them to address their concerns, the only outstanding issue among discussions and, and trying to fini- figure out what was best to clarify, there is that paper street portion that's, that's attached to this particular project, and that's that Park Street, um, and that was never actually constructed, we had said that it was going to be part, partially constructed based upon the need for the turnaround, since they weren't going to be doing a cul-de-sac, and the fire truck needed that turnaround, so because it's being partially constructed and based upon what we had discussed with, you know, maintenance of the stormwater infrastructure on the backside, that, that will abut the Park Street side, the fact that the Benjamin extension component is not going to be maintained by the town, and so therefore, the homeowner would technically have to maintain that turnaround, and that because it's being partially constructed, how could we remove any, any similarity between what we already have as a Park Street over here in School Street that's been constructed and has houses and addresses and whatnot? And so when I had, um, originally talked to the applicant, they had brought it up in the pre-construction meeting, and I was like, I got to look into that, and so I, in the process, went back and forth, and I contacted town council, and they said that we would be, the developer or owner of the land, which would be the developer, would be able to rename the street, um, so that there would be no confusion moving forward, and they would just make a notation on the plan, um, and that would just state that the, the paper street was never constructed due to another, you know, similar name similarity, and then when I checked with the assessor's office, the assessor's office said it would make a lot of sense to just change that to Benjamin extension, because it's already part of the extension, and then it'll clarify maintenance issues, stormwater issues, et cetera, moving forward. The applicant does not want to move forward with renaming that, but my only caution is just from emergency personnel and also maintenance issues that might cause a problem, we construct half of a street that's named Park Street, and we already have a Park Street, mutual aid issues, those that are not in town, those types of things, so I think it's an easy fix, but it's obviously up to the applicant to decide whether or not they want to, and the board, as to whether or not they would, they would like to recommend that they do, so if the board would entertain an insubstantial change just for clarification purposes, I have drafted something, um, the one draft that I did put together, I did remove, um, what originally was discussed with the applicant and their attorney, which was that the decision had not been recorded, but I guess now it has been recorded, and the intent was to take the insubstantial change that just clarified that the Form thirty-sixth, that, the Form A that created thirty-six Benjamin, was issued a building permit, and is issued a CO, and that the road is tied to the other lot, not necessarily that lot, because it didn't need to go before the, the planning board, nor was under the planning board's jurisdiction, um, and so it was to take the insubstantial change, attach it to the decision, and get it all recorded together, so everything's all together, if you ever had any, oh, oh, I see what they did, oh, and then the plan would also be recorded, but apparently they've already recorded the plan as well, so all of those documents have already been recorded, so as to a way to clarify the issue in terms of Park Street, I'm not sure what the board would like to do, if they even have any issues with that, or whether or not they would like to even entertain an insubstantial change, since all of the paperwork has been filed legally with the registry of deeds, and I'm just not too sure exactly how the board would like to proceed, but I do know that the applicant is here present, and she can speak towards that.
Do you have a plan, Paige, on this? Anybody got a plan?
I can get the original plan that we approved.
Okay, that, that would be great, thank you for doing that, just so we can see that. Yeah. And it's just for this one house?
Sure.
Okay. About twenty-five years ago. Um, the planning board voted, because subdivisions were coming in at the time, to get a name list of all streets, that was put together by the schoolchildren over at the Bagnow School, and I might still be on that wall, and it predated the nine-one-one system coming in for confusion, um, so that there wouldn't be any confusion, because, and quite frankly, a lot of subdivisions at the time were being named after family members or something, I don't know, they want to get around that a little bit, so, so that list was put out, then came the nine-one-one system, that would definitely cause some confusion with two park streets, so that's going to go.
It's not, it is, but you're constructing it.
Right.
But there's never a street sign, like, who's going to know that that's Park Street?
So it's a name change of a plan? And what was their beef, what did they want? What did they, what did they want you to do, whoever brought it to your attention? But that's, okay, there was an, there was an issue that brought that up, or was it?
The original issue was that we didn't know how to address Park Street, the documents, when Park Street doesn't exist, so.
So it's cart before the horse thing, right?
But if you have like a stormwater, if you have to construct Park Street, right, in order to provide the turnaround, and that provides the turnaround for maintenance documents for the future homeowner, you have to plow Park Street, you have to maintain the, the tension pond right on Park Street.
Right.
If Park Street doesn't exist, it, it does exist, but it's not, it already exists. If Park Street doesn't exist. It does exist, but it's not, it already exists on School Street. So for clarity and for emergency purposes, while we wouldn't have a street sign, where you wouldn't have an address, you would still have to refer to Park Street as part of the lot, because you're constructing that portion of it.
So.
If you were not to plow that portion of Park Street, then a fire truck could not get down to that park. If you do not maintain the stormwater infrastructure, the building commissioner is not able to enforce that when you don't have proper reference to such, or maintenance documents that reference such.
Okay, I get that part. So, so. So is your intent to, to just put out a letter that says all references to Park Street hereby are now called Benjamin Street Extension?
The town council had mentioned doing it through the plan, because when you do the plan, the plan of land, it creates the lot. But I, I'm not too sure. There could be a very valid reason as to how to put a notice out, I, I don't know, but they had designated it when, with, through the plan. But then when they find the lot, the lot will have a notation on the plan, which will say that the name was abandoned and renamed to X-whatever it is, based upon the fact that there was another Park Street already in existence at the time of the creation of the lot. Like Pecker Way, you would have had to create the roadway, and it had Pecker Way, but if you went to go create that roadway, then you would have renamed the roadway if you had it somewhere else.
Right, so where's Park Street now besides there?
School Street. They don't rely school.
School, okay, so it's gotta go. So.
Could they ever connect in any way?
What connects?
The two Park Streets. Usually when there's a paper road, it's because it's like the extension of an actual existing road.
And that, they, they don't.
They just, there's no way that they ever could. Right, that's what I'm thinking, that there's no geographical way they ever could.
And that's why when the assessor looked at it too, they said an extension of is just like what they have is Elm Park Extension.
Extension, right.
And so Benjamin Street Extension would incorporate all of that, and it would just, it would, it would.
So would that go in a cover sheet of, of, or just a separate page addendum? Or would it just go with the memorandum, or a single letter that attaches to everything?
I don't see why it couldn't just be like a letter.
Everything has been recorded, apparently, so I'm not too sure exactly how you would address that particular.
It'd have to be a letter that attaches to the, to the plans and attaches to the memorandum stating that, you know, due to the conflict in the nine-one-one system, that Park Street, every reference to Park Street here is hereby now named Benjamin Street Extension. And that's it?
It's a paperwork exercise. No, but it'll wind up being a paperwork exercise, and that way, a hundred years from now, when none of us exist, everyone will understand what we did.
But my, my intention was just to just change, just to clarify in the decision where it mentions, where it often says more than one lot and houses. That's where people are confused, that it just references one house. That the subdivision approved plan is just for that one house, lot eighteen B.
So that's, that can be put in the letter too, but have your attorney draft it and bring it in for signature? Oh, you got it?
But I had removed the Park language, because the applicant decided that they didn't want that in there. So we could have done that as part of the insubstantial change and recorded it at the registry to amend that.
Okay.
That's all it is, is just part of the insubstantial change, and it just gets recorded like the other part? I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Like I said, I don't have a problem with that, it's just something new that was brought to me.
So, so they need to redraft it, or?
I drafted it, and I've talked with our attorney, and I redrafted it, and then they told me that they recorded things, so then I redrafted it again. So I have a redraft of a redraft that doesn't mention anything about Park Street. The insubstantial change just asked for clarification. So it just says the decision of, the condition of the decision applies to map forty-six, lot eighteen B. It mentions the Form A. It mentions the house already being built. It mentions it already being issued a, a building permit. It also talks about the extension. I can pass it out. I just think that it, the one thing about it is that it doesn't reference the Park Street. And my recommendation is that it should definitely clarify with Park Street and make it a Benjamin extension.
Yeah, I agree. So why, so who, who draws that up? Us or them?
Well, I think she already had it, so it's just going back to the previous draft.
Redraft it again to include it, and then we can have, if a vote is taken, we can have a member sign it. You'll see on the back that I've, on behalf of, and then provide it to the applicant to get it to the registry to record.
So can we vote on that today, that you'll put that back in?
Yes, I can vote that we'll put it back in.
So, so motion?
Second. Just because this is a literal paperwork exercise, it's not that you're actually constructing a street. No, if you were actually renaming a street that existed, we'd have more problems. No, no, no.
Yeah, so that's, that's fine. Do we, lot call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Is that your nameless?
Yes.
Okay, done. Yeah, I'm surprised actually that, that didn't get flagged with the fire department during their review.
You'll tell it to me, and I'll sign it and just drop you a hard copy?
I wonder if they, I wonder if they saw it. Usually very good about that. They'll flag that right away. So what's up now, Volchav?
A and R, fourteen Volchav.
So this is for map seven, lot seven on fourteen Volchav. I did a printout on your aerial view. The homeowner is looking to add area that is located on one fifty-six Main Street, and combine it with his lot, so it would be a lot line adjustment if the non-conforming lot currently. And this particular change would just make the lot more conforming, so essentially you're just adding.
Just add land in the back, that's it? Just thirty thousand? No reason, or any building reasons, or any potential? How big is that? Thirty-five hundred square feet?
So that makes it what, thirty thousand?
It's still under. The total, I believe, is about twenty-something, and the required in an R two is thirty. It still makes it more conforming, though, for sure.
But you can't make a less conforming lot anymore, less conforming.
This is true, and it only has ninety square feet advantage, so they're small lots.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I like easy things.
The applicant has already provided fifty dollars, and he has three copies, original, A and R, one, the Mylar, and two copies. Uh, yes, we usually give one to the applicant, one to the.
I wish they were the calm. They're really nice. Yeah, you always run out, like, on the cold night. Never on the night that it's like seventy.
Is it four?
Today's the fourth.
Five.
There's a fourth, yeah. You know, it should be, you keep this one with the Form A, and then they get the Mylar. And they bring back the copies from the disk. Stop right there. They give you a disk? Okay, you're gonna get that over to Assessor. Did she get that into the Meramec Valley system with MIMI?
Usually what I do is I leave until they record it, and I keep it on file, and then once they record it at the registry, I send her over and see that.
And does that go to MVPC too? Because they do it on a county map. Each, because each of the parcels now are.
She'll update her list, which then gets to them, and then they update theirs for their, all their mapping needs for our community.
Yeah, because when we did the zoning over, and we, we put each of the parcels, it took a long time, it took seven years. We put each of the parcels of land in Groveland actually on, and then updated MVPC system, so you could go to, just like we did, and you see each of the parcels, and it's on the map, so. So they're updating, that's where the discs come in, and the subdivisions, and they take a big chunk of land, and they make them all little parcels, and that gets updated through the whole systems. I think MVPC, the assessor, and, you know, we got a copy, but I can't remember where the other one went.
They use Patriot, the assessor uses a system called Patriot, and then our, our, our map system, MyMap, is through the Meramec Valley Planning Commission. So, but I believe the Patriot database and the information that she provides to the Meramec Valley populate that through that database, not necessarily actual copies, like hers is updated through the.
Right, right.
That gets in her system, which is then transported to MyMap, and then reflected on the map system, but yes.
So, because every so often, when we get enough data, we're supposed to update that zoning map with all the new, and a lot of stuff has come through, so we've done that.
We just did that recently.
Okay, so are those maps available? Are they on the big posters everywhere?
They're on the, they're on the website, and they're also, we have one in the planning office, one in the, the, excuse me, the building commissioner's office, and then one went to the assessor's office, and then one went to the city, the town clerk's office.
Right, so she's got it on the door or something in there?
Yep, so we have the, and we have the smaller versions, and we can print the smaller versions, anyone who would like them.
Is that going to town meeting to get that done, or no?
For this one, the only change was done in like two thousand and eighteen, I believe, that the town warrant voted to change RB to R two and R one.
Oh, so you did it with the map, yeah.
So that was the only change recently that was made. Any other parcel changes wouldn't need to go through it. It would just be the actual zoning, if it was changed, that would have to be updated.
Yeah, usually we, we fired off to, to update it, and then it goes into the master planning and all that, so. That's good, glad that worked.
Is there someone actually coming in for this last one, or are we just talking?
Yes, the gentleman that was.
Did you stamp those today?
Jay Ogden was supposed to come in. I don't see him.
I don't see him.
I haven't seen him yet.
Just stamped on the Form As, is that today? Okay.
I, I don't see him, so I don't believe. I don't have his application.
So?
Even better.
He has even, he has application as forms prior to.
New business then.
I thought it was over.
No.
Well, we're like thirty seconds.
From the planning board member terms.
Yes, that's the only other update that I have.
At least has to stay on for another year.
No, I do not. I formally resigned.
The town will pay for calling.
You'll find me at Groveland, eh?
So we have two of the terms. So we have two open seats for the ballot on May twenty-twenty. So we have one-year term open to complete the term for Jim Freer, who resigned earlier this year, and was set to expire in May twenty-twenty-one. And then we have a three-year term open for Bob Arakalian, who recently had resigned, who is set to expire in May twenty-twenty-three. And then, so we have Jim here with us, who's been serving out Jim Freer's term as an appointed member. So that term will expire when the election is complete, so that's twenty-twenty. So there's that open seat, and then also Brad is our associate member, so he is appointed fiscal year, so his appointment will end in June two thousand and twenty, so he's good until the, the end of the, the year, I mean, excuse me, fiscal year.
Okay, so who's, who's sticking around? Is it me? Are you coming or going, Tom?
Me?
Yeah.
I'm staying for now.
Till?
I have no idea.
Oh, all right. Yeah, I thought that, yeah, that project thing.
I have a project thing going, but at least, probably at least through the summer or anything.
Oh, well, that's fine. Okay, so, all right. You're staying on?
I like my associate status.
Yeah, good.
So what, you'll get reappointed in July?
All right, so, all right, so that's good. So I'll check with the clerk this week and see if she can pull that, not the elections, but the, the actual warrant articles, the two articles, the one that converted and the one that put it back. And it'll determine from those years on those articles who was affected, and then she has to write to the secretary of state, which should have been done right after that town meeting, and it just corrected the, the timeframe, because I think you got a five-year seat.
So then, so, but Lisa, you said that you were gonna resign?
I will resign.
When do you think you'd resign? In May or later, or?
Uh, probably earlier, uh, probably April, but it depends on what's coming in, because I don't want to sit on something I can't complete.
So that was gonna be one of the next items I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention? So our next scheduled meeting would be later in February, which we don't have anything that we need to take a look at right now. The next scheduled meeting would take us to March third, but March third is the presidential primary, so we cannot hold our hearing. So that would take us to the next meeting, which would be scheduled on March seventeenth. We did receive the one oh six King Street ten lot subdivision. So they had submitted, but they didn't submit in time to get on the February agenda. They could have gotten on the March, uh, third agenda, but again, we can't hold it. So the next scheduled meeting would need to be held on March seventeenth because of the ten lot subdivision filing, preliminary filing that was just submitted.
Wait, where's that?
I, I have it in my office, I can.
Oh, I didn't even hear about it.
Yes.
It's also St. Patrick's Day for those that.
I don't know that I, I don't know how long it's gonna drag, is the problem.
Presidential and, and elections do, but if the board would like to reschedule for a different day, we just need to do it either before the seventeenth, or shortly thereafter.
Do we do the eighteenth or something?
Eighteenth is a Thursday?
It's a Wednesday. March eighteenth is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
So that's the preliminary, so I don't know, let's start from your standpoint, whether or not that makes sense for you to want to continue on with that, or?
I would only say no, because I don't know how long that could drag on, and I'm telling you that I won't make it to the end if it's more than like three meetings.
I would imagine it would be at least.
It's gonna be.
I imagine it's going to drag at least for.
Six months.
What you would say is an appropriate amount of time. So I guess what I can do is just resign prior to that, because then if there's nothing else coming, I mean, I could resign right now, technically, right? If that's the next meeting. Like, I, I would write a letter. I'm not doing it right now, but.
If the board decides that, that, that March eighteen would be a suitable date, and that does not suit in terms of your schedule, then certainly.
I don't think it will, because there's no way that it's done in time for me to actually vote on it, so it's not really gonna work. Bring the kids, no. That's one way to get meetings done really fast, though, should have a screaming baby in the background. But, yeah, I guess I will bow out, and I will just write my letter sometime in the next month, because it's really moving, no.
So is the eighteenth good for everybody else?
That's a Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
That's the Wednesday, yeah.
Sorry. Next week, next time.
Month for now.
So then we'll say March eighteenth would be suitable for the, the reschedule date, so I will reschedule the meeting for March eighteenth, and we might not get this room, and I have to figure out the room situations, and specifically, we meet on Tuesdays, but I will make sure that we get the. But I will make sure that we get the meeting noticed for the subdivision. We will need a core, it could be three members, and that will kick off the preliminary process. Other than that, we don't have any other, um, business items to tend to.
Okay.
Do I write a letter to you or to Denise?
Um, you can, we, you can be the clerk.
Okay.
And if you could CC, can that be great?
I'll copy everybody, yeah. I'll copy everybody.
So is it okay if, if the, the applicant for the three A and R is present? Would the board be amenable to hearing that request?
What is it?
Jay?
It's a, it's sorry, it's an A and R to what?
A and R plans to donate seven and a half acres of land to conservation.
Well, that sounds like a good idea. Had to hear that twice, sorry. It's already been cleared by their hurdles and?
Uh, yeah.
Is this up near the town forest or is it?
Yes.
Is this the old, uh, the access road or something there?
It's.
That was gonna be part of this, uh, when it was the Wood Street subdivision?
Yes, it's, uh, more or less half of the access path. And it goes in along a trail, um, and it's laying on one side of the trail at this point.
Is this the one that where, um, Bob Guptill wrote the restrictions on it too? They went with it?
I'm sorry, who?
Bob Guptill from the, uh, open space committee. He actually wrote a whole, um, set of restrictions that goes with that for conservation. They, yeah, so I'm sure they would put that in there too.
Yeah, I'm sure if they had those, they would report them.
Yeah, yeah. Let's go with that. So what's pointed out?
Put it on too?
Sure.
There was basically, uh, building in to a thirty-eight acre parcel. We were dividing that, that strip. We were gonna give, um, the town an access strip in to roughly seven and a half acres. The land's about two-thirds upland, one-third wetlands. We would eventually, when we get some other plans finalized, like to combine that with some more acres that, that.
Sure.
Covers the whole access strip and encompasses.
Except that you won't be using, okay.
And that's gonna go to conservation too or? Is it a sale or are you donating?
Uh, donating.
Well, we haven't heard the rest of it, but.
Yeah.
What's the intent of the other?
Is that it? I mean. I mean, I know, I know there was a.
Before we say yes.
A lot of that was supposed to go in there, but, yeah.
Um, the remaining portions outlined here. And we're just trying to work our way through an access to build two, possibly three homes of the remaining. Uh, thirty acres. Hopefully that puts.
Is it a little wet?
Yeah, so I'm trying to find out.